I'll call the meeting, the McHenry County zoning board of appeals to order. The purpose for our hearing today is application Z two five zero zero nine three. The applicant is Railway Solar LLC. The request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. The PIN number associated with this application is seventeen zero five one hundred dash zero zero four. The property consists of approximately seventy-two point six acres and is located on the north side of West Union Road, approximately fifteen hundred feet east of the intersection of West Union Road and South Grant Highway in Coral Township, Illinois. At this time, I'll have the zoning board of appeals members introduce themselves in the township in which they reside. Starting on my left, Mr. Cozen.
Robert Cozen, El Gakuad Township.
Mary Donner Greenwood Township.
Charlie Overt Richmond Township.
Lynn Laney Acustra in Alden Township.
Dicky Gardner Nunda Township.
Kurt Snell Riley Township.
Bill Kearney Grafton Township.
This petition has been reviewed and the following items have been received prior to today's scheduled hearing. Publisher's certificate of publication from a newspaper is dated November twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Affidavit of posting was signed and date posted was November twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Affidavit of mailing was signed and date mailed was November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The survey has been checked against the petition, legal notice, and publication in the newspaper, and all three match. The filing fees have been paid. The endangered species consultation has been received, and the McHenry County Solar Conservation District report has been received. This would be NRI number two five zero five six four seven one seven. So for anyone who's not attended a zoning hearing before, how this hearing works, it's a quasi judicial hearing, so rules of testimony apply. The petitioner will present their case. They will be asked questions by members of the board and by staff. Then if any member of the public has a question, it has to be regarding their testimony that they present. You will have three minutes that you can ask questions regarding their testimony. After that is done, then staff will give their report, and then when that is completed, any member of the public that wants to give a statement. So the first opportunity is only questions, not your opinion on anything, but at the end, if you have an opinion that you want to state, you'll have three minutes to do that as well. So because we have rules of testimony applying, everybody will be under oath, whether you're asking a question or making a statement, some kind of testimony. So at this time, I would ask anyone who will be doing that to raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you affirm that the testimony you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, I will turn it over to the petitioner to go ahead and present your evidence. Please introduce yourself and your position with the company, and then you can go through the recording.
That you can just leave up there.
Okay. Instead of standing up there, I think I'll just stand in the back so everyone can see.
And this is being recorded, so if you'd just speak up so that recording can pick you up.
Hello, board members. Hello, members of the public. My name is Paul McCarowitz, and I represent AES Clean Energy and Railway Solar. I'm also accompanied by Roden Solomon, our third-party consultant with Kinley Horn today to answer any questions and to bring this project in front of McHenry County for consideration for a conditional use permit. This is just a kind of rough presentation outline. I know that there's a lot of information in there. We'll be covering kind of just high-level things. If anyone has any questions, comments, concerns, please, you know, you can go ahead and stop me or wait for your turn at the end of this presentation to kind of bring up any thoughts or concerns for this project. I want to give just an overview of what AES Clean Energy is. We're a larger energy company. We have fossil fuel and renewables, a part of the renewables division, and specifically a part of the community solar division. So I'll go into it a little bit later on this presentation, how this differs from large utility scale, but for right now, we're aiming to have twenty-five to thirty gigawatts of renewable energy on the grid by twenty-twenty-seven, and that is a considerable amount of energy that is just from wind and solar and battery storage. We are present in twenty-six states right now with five hundred projects being developed. We do have a joint venture with Simmons, and we're a one-stop shop for battery development as well that is being made here in the United States.
Are you proposing battery storage for this facility?
No, this will just be solar only.
Thank you.
As you can see in this map right here, we are actually in forty-eight states with developing and prospecting of the twenty-sixth that we're actually operating in right now. We most certainly understand that every community is different, and we want to serve the community that we are in. We don't have anything that is so cookie cutter in the way where we have a project that we're just like, oh, this won't work here. We like to work with local stakeholders, local officials, to build the best project that will meet their electricity needs here within the county. Solar is extremely cost-effective compared to its fossil fuels, generation plants, and for the most part, we can get a community solar project within six to eight months from actual groundbreaking. Sometimes it could be a little bit longer, but we really shoot for six months to be fully This is a map of our community solar portfolio. My team focuses mostly within the Midwest, but as you can see, it is just for Illinois. We've actually had five projects come online last week, and they're located more in the southern portion of this, of the state. We do have a ten-megawatt, kind of larger facility that's actually built on top of a landfill cap, so we are taking use of different type of land covers to make it more profitable and really good for whatever communities that we work with. So the biggest thing between community solar and utility is this facility is actually putting energy on the local distribution grid, comparably to something that is much larger, putting on a large regional transmission line and sending it somewhere else, and you have no idea where that energy is. This facility, Community Solar, is on the Comed line right here. I'll get into it a little bit later, but generally, anyone can be part of this community solar project to the point where usually we see ten to fifteen percent annual savings on your electricity bill just to be part of this certain facility. Also wanted to mention, every project that we do here has a permanent stakeholder group to stakeholder relations group, so if there's any comments, concerns, we have all information posted on the site. You can call, you can email, and we have a team that will respond to those types of inquiries when they actually come up.
So the Illinois Shines program, that's where the community subscribes? Is that what that is, or is that something different?
It's close. This project, Illinois Shines, is more of we have a direct renewable energy credit agreement with the utility. We can operate in that program or we can operate outside of that program. And with the Illinois Shines, there's a different rubric for if the project qualifies or not. So regardless, let it be in the Shines program or outside of it, you can be part of that community solar project. And what's really cool, too, is you don't need to be anywhere near this project's actually built, just within the utility territory. So if you have Comed, Commonwealth, Edison, or Amarin, you can go get a subscription, get ten to fifteen percent off, and that subscription can follow you around if you have different properties, and there's other incentives, too, which I can provide you guys information for that later on. So Railway Solar is located in Coral Township between Union and Merengue. Our export capacity is just shy of five megawatts AC. The DC size is just a little bit larger than that, with a total parcel acreage of a little bit more than seventy acres on agricultural one. Upon like, you know, COP approval, we expect to break ground and start construction probably in the later half of twenty-six, and then having something, having this facility online before the end of twenty-twenty-seven. Of course, there's always things within construction schedules that move around, but like that is our goal, to have this operational less than a year. This is our current project design. We have inverters located away from residences right now. The majority of field we're using to our benefit to put in these, this facility, with leaving the best extent possible for agricultural land to the landowner if they still want to keep using that. Just want to mention that this is still like a five percent design, and then over the winter, we'll be going and developing larger, more mature designs as this project kind of moves along to that aspect. So definitely, any types of comments or questions from any stakeholders here will be definitely taken to heart, and definitely for the comments from the community, that's something that we want to build in before, you know, we actually, you know, submit for building permits. Fence height, all the way around this facility is going to be seven feet tall with a six-inch wildlife gap underneath, and we'll provide updated designs when we apply for building permits as this project matures.
The green line is your fence?
Yes, it is. One thing that I always kind of strive for, we want to minimize any type of tree felling that is on the facility. Our access road that you can see here, we'll be utilizing a smaller, like, tree band here to put in a gravel road. This is our temporary laydown area here with the panels extending on out, but for the most part, we do not like to fill any trees, you know, if we don't have to, and that is something that we always talk with our landowners and to make sure that they are completely in agreeance for what our design is moving forward for this project. So for community solar, you've heard me say it before, but like, this is local distribution level energy. This is benefiting the local community, not only with providing solar and renewable energy to everyone here without putting panels or windmill on your property, but also for like disaster resiliency. I know last year, there was a lot of tornadoes that came on through. Distribution networks are always crazy, and you could always talk with Comed or Amarin about that, but we saw more communities more resilient without losing power because they actually had a local power generating station within their neighborhood. So that's really cool to see. This is all that we are trying to truly do is to, you know, if you ask anyone, where does the electricity come from, you know, I have no idea, you know, in a certain way is what everyone says, but then you're just like, no, there's community solar on this network that is just down the street from us. So it's really cool to see that. For property impacts, I know that there's a lot of information out there nowadays. We haven't seen a diminishing in property impacts proximal to these facilities, and there's new studies coming on out. We take that to heart, and we do review those new information just to make sure that we are adequately explaining this type of situation to our county board. So there's more studies coming on out that we take to heart. And I'll talk about this in a moment, but we usually do a big canvassing for stakeholder relations beforehand, and that'll be in the next slide, but from a tax revenue aspect, we estimate about a million dollars coming back into the county for having you guys separate that for your local code and tax revenue. And yeah, there's no upfront costs. If you want to be part of this facility, it's actually free, and you don't have to put any solar panels and do the initial capital expense on your property to be part of renewable energy projects within your area. This facility also is about generating electricity for twelve-hundred homes annually, which is cool, and the technology is actually getting better as the years go on, so hopefully, when we get to this, that number will go a little bit higher. From a permitting aspect, we're accurent to all county and state standards. The project layout and setbacks for project components are in accordance with McHenry County's ordinances. We've done a glare analysis on this facility, and we do not have any glare for any sensitive receptors, let it be homes or roadways proximal to this project. The vegetative cover, we have a lot of really good mature vegetation around this facility. I know we put it in our application that if there's anything that we can do to help bolster some certain areas that the county feels that we need to bolster, that's one-hundred percent within, you know, our ability to do so, and we like to work with all stakeholders on developing something like that. We refer to all community solar projects as the silent neighbor. Once they're up, they will maybe have one person go on out, minus landscaping crews, you know, a quarter, just to take a look at this facility, but essentially, they do not emit noise, and if anything that does emit noise is well-suited and placed outside of sensitive receptors. There will be no permanent lighting on this, and if we do need to do something from a security standpoint, all lights will be shielded down, and we will post decommissioning plan and bond with the county as well as a road use agreement for all of our construction equipment that will be using county roads, public roads, before we move forward with building permits. Another thing to mention, coordinating with local first responders. I know that Union and Merengue Fire Protection District have kind of reached on out. We are coordinating with them as well, and we usually, I mean, train local first responders on how to respond to in case that there's an emergency here. I know there's a couple of requirements for knockboxes, but that is something that we'll definitely work with local first responders to get in for our final designs before building permits or CUP given to us. With this, and especially bringing before you guys, we have coordinated with all state, local, and federal agencies on just what type of permits we need. I know there's a few comments from a few stakeholders worried about water or threatened endangered species. We have gone through the appropriate channels, and we have also provided those studies in attachment to our CUP application and ZDA application that you have in front of you. It's kind of tough to see, but I can definitely send this map out around, but we've sent out mailers to give information on August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, to these stakeholders here and within their mailing addresses. It seems like the majority of people have received that. Sometimes our mailers kind of look like just the usual junk mail that you would see, so it's kind of just like asset line that gets thrown on out. But with anything that we are going through, we like to send out this type of information to all stakeholders to our best of our ability, just so everyone is in the loop just with this project coming on in and not getting blindsided when this project is going in front of the county board. Construction considerations, all, when we actually go and, you know, for these projects to start building, all construction activities will be in accordance of whatever the county or appropriated work hours would be. You want to have anything that's overnight, or, you know, and that's something that, you know, we can work with all of our stakeholders and counties to have something that works for everybody. At AES, safety is always number one. You don't really think of it, but you know, there's a lot of hazards with a lot of trips and falls out there when everything is being put into the ground, so an emergency management plan will be furnished prior to building permits and coordinated with local law enforcement, first responders for making this facility safe as, as best as it needs to be. Stormwater management plan will be developed and submitted to the county as well, and I know that there's a few other comments for just like runoff and impervious services, and that's something that we will most certainly love to work with all stakeholders and agreed upon before issuing some of the building permits. Operations maintenance monitoring and decommissioning, depending on the vegetation growth, we'll usually have like once a quarter with the vegetation management plan we will develop and to submit to the county before our building permits to be agreed upon. I know that there's a few other things within your ordinances to develop and to secure ground cover beforehand, so you don't have any fugitive dust or anything else, and that's totally achievable with what we have seen before. Maintenance, silent neighbor, these facilities are monitored twenty-four, seven hours a day, three sixty-five, from our remote operations center in Salt Lake City. I've met the guys in that office before, especially the guys overnight. They just sit there watching, you know, solar panels that are not collecting energy at night, but like, if there's any type of issue, we'll definitely see it, we'll have maintenance crews go take a look at it. And if there's, we'll have things on fences of just information, contact information. If the public sees something that is not right and they want to call it in, they'll get someone on the phone directly that could actually talk with them about the facility or anything that is there. Decommissioning, of course, will also be in accordance with McHenry County and everything that will need to be adhered to, decommissioning plan and scrap value. We did receive a few comments from McHenry County and the community, a lot of it at guidance for native vegetation. We've received it from the Department of Planning and Development of what needs to be done for vegetation management plan. We can definitely work with the county to see if what we have is going to be suitable, and if not, we will keep working with all stakeholders to develop a good plan. For the building division, they have given us a recommendation for design specifications and access requirements, and that's something that we will most certainly work with and to train first responders. For DOT, we do have a right-of-way dedication on West Union Road for a width of fifty-five feet, and that is something that is already within our plans right now at the request of the Department of Transportation. I'm expecting that road to be upgraded at some point in time, so this is where, this is where that comes on in. For McHenry County Water Resources Division, just some of your requirements for site conditions, hydrology, stormwater and vegetation, drain tunnel requirements, drain tunnel requirements, and everything else would be adhered to in the AMA as well as any other county provisions. We did get one objection from a proximal residence concerning this project and where their house is. I haven't made contact with that individual yet, but I hope to soon to go walk their property or see anything that is out there that we can talk about, you know, I believe that he is here today, and to kind of just put any type of concerns with screening or fires or anything else to bed and to give pretty much a direct line to me and my company of any things that they will see during construction or operation. But yeah, I know that was a lot of information, everyone. Do want to say thank you to everybody here, really do appreciate your time, and if there's any questions, comments, concerns, objections, please, I would, I would like to answer them.
Okay, we'll start with questions on my right, Mr. Kearney.
Just, just a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Did I understand your testimony that you'll not be felling any trees at all?
We will aim not to. As our thirty, we go from a five percent to a thirty percent, and then our construction crews take that to a hundred percent and apply for building permits. We aim not to. There might be a point in time where we have to, but I know that you guys have a certain ordinance with felling certain trees or planting trees in respect to that. The way that we have it right now, there's going to be a small area to put in an access road to fill trees, but we're not cutting down trees to put panels into a certain area. We're putting panels into the usable acreage with minimal felling.
Are the trees that are going to be possibly removed, are those just scrub trees?
I was out there yesterday. It seems like the DBH requirement for that, it's under the threshold. It's definitely nothing that I saw that's like over like twelve inches DBH, but we can go out there to take a tree survey to find out what type of species and that little diameter or breast height to find out if that is within your guidance, but it's a very small band of trees between two small fields, well, one field and a larger agricultural field. And I think to follow up, I don't, we don't anticipate any oil growth, oaks, big impact as part of that.
That was going to be my next question. Okay, thank you. There was questions raised, at least by the one homeowner, noting that this is a, there's a high potential for contamination due to the nature of the soil. This is a sensitive aquifer recharge area as well, substantial portion of property, they like sixty, you know, sixty or seventy acres or so. Could you just address, you know, at least as far as the panels are concerned? My understanding from your submissions is there aren't any toxic materials in the panels themselves, and that whatever toxic materials may be present are in connection, are interconnections and wiring and soldering or whatever. If you could just address that, please.
Yeah. So for panels, everyone gets scared of the heavy metals that are in there. The way that our panels are designed, a lot of those materials are inert, like, so if you were to break a panel on the ground, you don't have to worry about cadmium falling out of it. The way that we have these materials is, and for every single project that we have, is not going to be toxic to the ground. Even if there's a fire, even if they get damaged, the elements that are in there are inert, essentially. I know it's a big, you know, recharge aquifer area, and still within our panels when it rains, you know, we have that rain being diverted to the ground right there, so you'll have some, a little bit of diversion. We'll have a stormwater management plan already in place, so that aspect of worrying about like, you know, is there any water diversion out of that aquifer? No, all the water that's going to fall there is still going to go into the aquifer, it's just going to hit a solar panel in between. For like soldering and any type of interconnection equipment, we do have transformers, and they'll be on pads, and the point of interconnection is along the road. For the time that I've been here at AES, I haven't seen anything, you know, transformers do fail, but for that type of hazardous material, it's more of an oil, and that's something that we will most certainly take a look at and track with our emergency response plan for remote operations center for these facilities. Did I, did I get all those points, or are you, is there one that I missed?
No, I was just concerned about potential contamination of the aquifers.
No, and of course, like with our standard construction practices, we've been minimizing fugitive dust on the facility while during construction. Any type of trash is going to be removed in accordance of how it should be removed in the county, and yeah, we don't, we don't have any hazardous materials minus gasoline in a truck would be the largest concern for hazardous materials for the development of this facility.
So precautions will be taken in the construction phase at least of avoiding contamination?
Hundred percent, yeah.
I saw that the county department of transportation mentioned that there's only one access is permitted and existing access would have to be closed?
Yes.
Has that been taken into consideration?
Yeah, we will definitely take it in consideration as our designs progress. The reason why we didn't want to use the same access, it's very proximal to another wetland within that area, and we'll have to fill trees, so that's where this new access is. We could definitely work with McHenry County DOT to close that original access. Usually, we'll like rip up, you know, the entrance there. We can even re-vegetate it to a point and then have just one main access for the entire parcel off of what we have brought forward.
If you could call up the site plan, please.
Totally.
The materials that we received mentioned that there's a jurisdictional wetlands there on the property.
From our studies, there are no jurisdictional wetlands, and that is with the US Army Corps of Engineers. I know that, I believe Coral Township was the one that brought that to our attention. We already went through state permitting for that, and that is a seasonal wetland that we are, one, we're already avoiding to begin with, and two, it's not jurisdictional for right now, and it's actually in this area located. There's another one down here, kind of just in this forest area, but we're well there, we're well away from that.
Okay, so you haven't, you don't feel that since it's not jurisdictional, there's no necessity for any buffers around that?
We're already avoiding it by, I believe, a minimum of fifty feet, and I can definitely go back and give you a definite answer after the presentation, but we're already, you know, well out of that area, giving up plenty of buffer, because when we actually go and put piles into the ground, if it's seasonally wet, that's going to be an issue for construction later on, so it's just easy for us to just not be, not anywhere near that for like hydrated soils and foundations.
And AES will be operating this facility?
Oh, yeah. So we're owner operators. We don't just get the permits and sell that off to anything else. AES, we are full suite. We have the relationship with the landowner. We build the facility. We have this for thirty-five years.
Okay. Mentioned in your presentation that the site will be regularly inspected to ensure that everything is operating properly and the vegetation is what it's supposed to be. What is regular?
It's all dependent on how we set up with our contractors, essentially. I know that- I know that there is a requirement for McHenry County to have a site assessment every year. And to be honest, once we get like ground cover established with like native vegetation, we usually have like once a quarter, landscape crews go on out there to inspect and see if there's anything else going on. We can definitely up that inspection for the first year to make sure that all the vegetation is, is taking and that will be like handed off to our asset management, but if it's a concern for any type of stakeholders, we can definitely increase the regularity of people going out to that site. But generally, you'll have one or two trucks a quarter to go inspect the site, and if vegetation is growing too quickly, we'll just increase the inspection and landscaping for that facility.
The pads where the transformer will be located, is that those red rectangles in the center there?
These are the inverters within here, and then this is what we call our medium voltage line, which will go to our overhead poles right here. So essentially, this is where you're going to see a lot of the equipment, step-up transformers, DC converter boxes, that will be housed there, and then it'll be, the energy will be converted from DC to AC from, from this line moving forward.
It, it seems to me that the way this, the array is located, that somebody living across, across the street there, across on, on West Union will see the same things that they see now, have the same view after construction as well?
Oh, absolutely, and that's what we try to uphold the entire time. And, you know, if you drive along this road right here, this is a heavily vegetated area, you can't really see through. If more vegetation screening is required, we will certainly put it up here, but like the view shed of any sensitive receptors, let it be homes or motorists on this side, is going to look extremely similar to what is there for current condition.
And that, I'm sorry, the lower, the southwest or southeast corner, that perpendicular rectangular, that, that's just a construction pad just for location?
Yeah, that's just a laydown area which we will rehab on compact soil and then bring back to the original look board once we're done.
And just for clarification, you mentioned that the revenue generated will be a million dollars approximately?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's not net, in other words, that's not what it would be over and above taxes that would otherwise be generated if the property was, or maintained agriculture?
As agricultural, yes, that would, the million dollars is what the fair market evaluation and taxation for a solar facility would be bringing into the cap team.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, that's taken, that's like all project components, not just an agricultural field, which would be significantly less.
Right. And Chair, that's all I have with this time.
Thanks, Mr. Schenfeld.
Bill's thorough line of questions is pretty well taken, all mine out of my mouth, but I do have a comment that I would like to add. It was in one of the letters, and I recall it was Coral Township or the objector himself, that mentioned the type of trees that were on the site, being junk trees like box elders and so on and so forth. They just wanted, for the record, mention, I did drive by, in large part because of the weather this morning, very, very slowly passed the site this morning, and I did not, I have a pretty horticultural background, I did not see anything of significance. In fact, I would just state that I tend to agree with the objector that whatever is there right now is really insufficient for screening from the, from the neighbor's perspective, especially since everything seems to be deciduous and has no leaves at the moment. That's all I have, same regards to that, and I'd like to pass along, please.
Mr. Carter.
Yeah, Bill kind of took the cake here. I do have one or two more, though. Now, you're talking about the $1 million return in tax money to the county, that's after, that's throughout the 35 years?
Yes.
That's not per year?
No, no.
Darn.
Yeah.
But I'd ask, yeah. So you're looking to be up and operating by '27, is that correct?
Yes, the end of '27.
The end of '27, okay. With approximately six to 12 months of construction?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's safe to say, supply chains are always changing, especially for this. We're actually going to be using a lot of domestic content components for this, and that is steel made in the United States, solar modules made in the United States to build this facility as well, so.
Okay. I was happy to hear you're the owner-operators, it's always something I like, but are you planning on using agrivoltex at all, or just regular mowing or?
We would, I mean, that's something we've been trying to like, you know, crack the nut on. We will, for right now, we will just be mowing. That doesn't mean that we can find a good partner moving on, let it be goats or sheep or pigs to actually go graze this.
Apparently there is short supply for this.
I mean, like, the part of me wants to leave my company and just start, you know, horticultural business to do all that, because there's definitely money to be had, but we've done this before in other regions of the United States, so like when we're ready and we have a good partner, we have a lot of past experience with projects where we have done agrivoltex for, let it be sheep, forgot the name, but it's kind of like a small pig, and they, they do a lot of grazing that, so that's something that I'm always trying to move forward right now. Unfortunately, the market for like lamb and beef here for, you know, huge flocks that actually need to be rotated out is pretty slim here in Illinois.
Okay. So since you're so early in your plans, you don't really know how many trees would have to be removed?
Um, no, I don't know from like an actual basal amount, but for the trees actually being removed for our access road, it's going to be like at most a tenth of an acre, but like that's, it's going to be something, you know, very thin. We don't know if we need to do a tree assessment, that's something we could definitely consider and talk about, but for the rest of this, the design has been, has definitely taken tree shading into account, where we have the panels off of, you know, we have this vegetative bank right here, the way that the sun will move with, with this project, we don't really have to worry about anything that's shading out here, so we're, we're going to keep this area for sure.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Mr. Eldridge.
Yes, the fence you're proposing, we like an agricultural type of fence, woven wire rather than a chain link, is that suitable for?
Hundred percent. Yeah, we've done it on multiple projects before, that's not an issue.
What is the area within the fence as opposed to the 72 acres?
Um, I don't know right offhand, I, I think right now it is like, it's around 60 acres is the number that I'm kind of pulling from, but I can definitely let you know what that acreage inside the fence would be, but that is going to be occupying 90% of the parcel.
Yep.
Okay.
That's really all I have, thank you.
Mr. Carter.
Five people before me, they really got my list down to minus one. I will just only say, I agree with what everybody has been asking, and I approve of your answers, fugitive dust. I love it, it's an interesting term, and with that, I'll say I have nothing else to say.
Mr. Plaschke.
Thank you. Breaking with tradition then, do you have any specific details on that tax revenue or how you derive the 1 million number?
So we have...
And that could be, excuse me, and that could be added to your record to substantiate your testimony?
I can take a look, I don't want to speak on that, because we have internal property tax calculators that could be proprietary, even though we've done a lot of our own research on how we should be evaluating this and our internal tax team. Definitely through Illinois and like CPI, there is a fair market value generally of like $215 per megawatt AC for a certain area, and the way that we calculate this is we go back through tax records for the past 10 years to find out what the rate is to, and I know COVID came along and really threw a lot of things off for what taxation is, so we kind of have a rule of thumb of what we should be carrying per year. If we get a positive tax increase percentage, we'll carry that. Sometimes we get a negative, only because the past few years have been crazy with taxes and how things are evaluated, so I can give you documentation that we pull from the actual tax calculation, and the calculator is probably something that I probably can share with the public, but I can point you in the direction for where we're pulling that information to inform us.
Or possibly look at how other applicants have submitted tables, so we can see how much is being contributed to the township, the library district, and so forth.
Oh, for sure.
Rather than each one of them thinking they're going to get a million dollars over the next 15 years.
One hundred percent, like, we can, we can show you our numbers, you know, for that, and then come up with percentages broken out by whatever tax body.
Thank you. The details on the site plan? There's a dual column under the modules, why, why did you break out the column on the site plan to?
Just let us see that.
There's these two sets of...
So AES has multiple warehouses where we have warehouse modules, only because we've found a good deal and a good technology with our partners to really allocate so much modules. So what you're seeing right there is a portion of modules that are allocated already in a warehouse, and then the other ones you're going to see is longie, and those are the ones that we are requesting from a U.S. manufacturer to be put into here, so these projects are really good to get new modules in with the same accompanying power from things that we already have warehoused, so fortunately, we gotta, we gotta get through some of the backlog, and there's a lot of times where we have multimillion dollar deals with companies to warehouse certain modules.
So what is the total number of modules that are spec down the site?
I think...
I didn't see a column.
I think it should be like around 12,000, I'll get the number for you, I just had my engineer.
Edit it.
Yeah, that's completely fine.
But then what is an SMA manufacturer? Do you, do you have acronym, or is they go by that?
It is, I don't know the acronym, but it's just a company, it's something, something America, and they're the ones that make the inverter, yeah. I could, yeah, that's all, I can get you that information if you guys are looking for the company, I have it right here afterwards.
You mentioned you're all Americans, or that might be...
Well, there's a good portion that we are due to us, this is not 100% American, because there are components that America just doesn't make, so...
The construction location, will all three, four inverters be located on that, or will they be dispersed through the site?
No, they're all located on that equipment pad.
Then my, my other question goes to the site plan. First of all, what are the activities expected in the laydown area?
That's where we will pre-position the equipment, let it be modules, conduit, inverters, so when vehicles come on in, they will unload all their equipment in the laydown area, go towards the back, and then move directly straight out onto the road without backing onto the road, but like, that's where it will be staging equipment to be dealt and put into the facility.
And for how long is the laydown area in active use?
Of construction.
Three weeks, I'm sorry, three weeks, six months, two years?
It will be for the entire portion of construction until we reach the completion of the facility, which then that will be rehabbed back to what that state would be, and that's just a general field.
Has comment been made by the property owner to the east about the activities that are associated with the laydown area?
We sent out mailers to them, we haven't heard anything back from them, of course, I'm, you know, I'm going to make, you know, more stronger attempts to get in contact them as we move through this process, just to let them know that this is happening and, you know, any other concerns that can be abated or mitigated by where that laydown is.
And then looking at the laid of rows, you have an insert of, of only one row as you move in a northerly direction, why did you add that single row and, and not continue with no row to the residents or buildings to the east?
Two things, I'm pretty sure that there is an actual buffer zone that we've put around this resident here, that we can't have certain amount of components, I believe, within 500 feet of the, of like a proximal residence. I can look on that, but I'm pretty sure that's like what dictated this movement over here. With how these strings are put on out, that's all electrical engineered, so like, it's, I wish we could put down things in a certain way where we just have land, but like, we have to keep a certain coefficient of electricity moving through the collection lines to the inverters to get transformed into AC, and that's where you'll see like, you know, some smaller pockets here, a lot of mathematical equations come into this effect for putting where each line string of certain power can be and how it can be laid on up. I would love to have everything just one big box, sometimes it works out that way, and that's great, but I believe for the, the leading thing right now, especially proximal to here, this was actually like a 500-foot buffer that we couldn't have permanent project components that close to residents.
I think just one clarification, too, if I'm understanding correctly, there is an existing non-jurisdictional wetland located right about here, which is impacting that, we're staying outside the buffer for that as well, and I believe the...
Please identify yourselves, just...
I'm sorry, Ryan Solon with Kimberly Horn, the civil engineer on this, and I believe the buffer for the resident is 150 feet.
150 feet?
Yep. So this is in excess of that.
Includes my question, but I was smiling because your strength theory reminds me of what domestically is happening with my seasonal light and why we're full of hot season. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Yes, and I'm looking at your actual site plan, and it does show exactly what gentleman from Kimberly Horn is showing, you can see the outline for the wetland buffer there on that area, as well as the 150 foot setback. I have a question, so the tree, I was looking where the trees were going to be removed, and it looks like, it's that little red rectangle above the pink section, it says 0.06 acres of possible tree clearing, that's the only place that you would be removing any trees, is that correct?
Yes, as it stands right now, designs are going to mature more, but this is what we have moving forward to get our balance of a conditional use permit, so when we have more mature designs, we're like, hey, use those specifications, this is what we have to do, and of course, if we need to remove more trees, especially when the, you know, designs become more mature, that's something that we will definitely talk with the county and...
But I can't see, I can't see where you would have to, because it's all just crockland, correct? There's no trees out in the field.
Yeah. When we have our construction crews, there's always like the best case scenario where they just were like, hey, let's just cut down everything, we're just like, no, that's not what we actually got permitted through the county, and this is all that we can remove right here. We haven't had really any issues with that before, I just note that.
And how wide is that roadway that's going back in there?
I don't know offhand, I think that's...
I think it's 20 feet.
20 feet, 16 to 20 feet.
So it'd just be that, basically?
And probably a little bit more on the side, but it's really that 20 to 40 feet, just for any type of equipment going in there and safety precautions for...
Okay. I can't really tell like where the vegetative screening is that you are supplementing, it doesn't go all the way around, correct? You're only proposing it?
It doesn't go all the way around, I know initially we have put a few different buffers on in there, this is something that we want to work with the county and see where you guys feel that...
Well, that's why I'd like to see where you, where you have it proposed before you hear anything from us, we've got to know what you already are proposing.
And there is within, I believe, that map here, this is like the fullest and largest extent, but we do have that orange for any type of supplemental, this is all preliminary right now to put in any other buffers where we don't have vegetation, not saying that, you know, we're going to put more vegetation down towards the south along the road, but these are just areas that we initially identified. I know from the...
It's just really showing that to the north area of your, where your laydown area is, correct? Or is it go all the way up the east side?
We do have a sliver over here that's going up along this way for supplemental vegetation, that's something that we want to just have a larger conversation with all stakeholders before we have something that is permanent definite going on to our next level.
Yeah, there's, I don't see anything specifically listed here. Yeah, there's, I don't see anything specifically listed here.
The map is kind of busy at times, and if there's areas identified, we will most certainly include it in our vegetation management plan to encompass. We want to make sure that we build the correct project for all stakeholders.
Can we see a picture of what you have proposed for landscape screening?
I don't have that, I'm sorry.
So, can you explain what you use for landscape screening?
It all depends. Usually, we do evergreen trees mostly to kind of build it in. You get that, you get that.
And how wide apart and what height? You don't have any of that information?
No, that will be furnished before construction permits moving forward and agreed upon by the county.
Usually, we see that in the presentation.
Unfortunately, I do not have that information as it is right now, and we can definitely design something and have your guys' approval for like a conditional approval as well. The way I've done it before is like, you know, if we have a conditional approval for an SUP, CUP, we'll have to meet a few things that move forward that you guys agreed upon, whether it be a road use agreement or vegetation management plan. And if we adhere to that, then we're able to get our permit in hand.
Okay. I don't have the specific documents in my folder today, but I saw some of the things that you received from different bodies that you had to get permits on. It said Zephyr LLC, and now it's changed to a different LLC, Railway Solar LLC? That's all the same?
It's the same project. Zephyr LLC was held by a different company when this was first brought from conception, and then we have converted all of our projects over to railway. So, there's not going to be two entities. It's Railway Solar LLC.
Okay. Then regarding the agricultural takes, are you aware of the research and projects being done at University of Illinois as far as field crops, different field crops that are being experimented with on solar farms?
I'm not super savvy on that information. I've heard it, but as it stands right now, we want to make sure that, you know, we have a facility coming in at, you know, before a certain deadline. We would love to work on projects more like that. Unfortunately, in the pipeline where this project sits, we're just going to be moving forward with moving for right now, and then maybe some horticulture later in the future. But that's, that's something down the line that, you know, still can be considered, but is not on the forefront, unfortunately.
As far as community solar, do you give anything back, like, to organizations? Like, we've had companies that have donated to certain organizations. Do you do that as well?
Oh, absolutely. You know, and that's something that we always like to partner with our stakeholders and the counties and towns and townships. I know that there is a conservation area in woods over that way.
So, how do you, how much do you give and?
It's all dependent on their situation, you know. We don't have like a standard amount. We want to see, we don't like to just give out money to get to the point of just be like, hey, we gave you this money, you guys should give a thumbs up. We want to see what the expected goal for whatever that organization is for what we can give to them that will be, you know, it's not just like, you know, we're just writing checks. We want to see if they're, want to rebuild a baseball park or do something else. We're like, oh, we can definitely contribute to that. So, those are our methods, rather than just giving a blanket amount of money to a certain entity just to get the check.
Mr. Eldridge, you have another question?
Yeah, just a simple process question. Have you a signed interconnection agreement with ComEd at this point?
Yes.
And are you required to do any off-site improvements to the transmission lines or equipment beyond that intersection point?
I believe for this project, we are doing substation upgrades for the closest substation, but that is kind of just all wrapped in for what we have to pay ComEd to get this project and assigned to IA. So, I can get back to you for generally what we do, but I don't have it offhand right now.
And you do have an executed aim as well?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Carrick, you have another question?
Yeah, thank you. There was the one letter that we received from Michael Stumbow, who asked for additional screening along where those houses are there. Would you be willing to work directly with them and, and put something together? I mean, we don't have anything to look at right now, and we usually like to look at that, you know, before we vote.
Oh, yeah.
But being that this, and this letter was, I have to say, Mr. Stumbow, I think you're here today. Yeah, nice letter. Thank you. I think that this time of year, everything is wide open to them, and they do probably need some additional screening.
We always work with stakeholders. There's plenty of times where we needed to get, you know, buy in and sign off from proximal residences. We'll always go by the county ordinance and direction, and, you know, and this is something that, you know, you can comment to. We can have a larger discussion outside of this for what you would like to see. And generally, if you're going to look for something, like, in a view shed, no matter what, you'll always find it. There is something that's being put in there. We want to make it to the less amount accessible. In the summertime, you're going to have crops, you know, between here you won't necessarily see, but the wintertime is always like a difficult thing to try to mask anything that's being put in there. We definitely want to work with everybody here, anyone along that road, if they want some more vegetation, and that's where they're going to, you know, go ahead and, you know, come to every single meeting to voice their, their concern. That's something that we want, we take to heart.
Okay. And where exactly is your house, Mr. Stumbow?
I'm at sixty-three thirteen, so if you look to the east of the subject property, just above that, right, one dump right there.
Okay.
Seven acres.
What you're saying is it's a pretty clear shot to?
It's a, it's a very clear shot. As you can see, the back of my property has basically box, tall box elders, and then the prop, the farm behind me, I mean, you can see in the picture, this obviously is a summertime picture when there's full leaves, and you can even see, you know, gaps in leaves during summertime. So, you can imagine that this time of year, it's, it's pretty much.
Right. But do understand that, you know, any screening that they put in would be on your property, not closer to your property.
That's all, yeah, that's all I would be asking for.
Okay. And I'm not sure if I should bring this up at this point. Would it be reasonable to ask for a continuance to get a landscaping plan?
I guess it's something we would, you could address in the voting meeting.
If I could just note, one of the conditions recommended by staff suggests a condition that they provide a detailed landscaping plan illustrating compliance with required landscape screening standards in the department, the and our pollinators scorecard standards. So, the fact that at least that's a recommended condition that alleviate your concerns about.
We can just go with the other.
About landscaping.
Okay. Again, I don't think you.
Okay. Anybody else? Does the staff have any questions?
Yes. Do you know what the distance is from the right of way through the panels?
Really?
Yeah, is it more than five hundred feet from the way?
I can use that up right now.
I'm just curious from that and also from the residence for the southeast there, because I know we've been talking about the vegetation. If it is more than five hundred feet, that vegetation would not be required by the ordinance there, but I know your slide plans indicate that you would be willing to add additional vegetation if it was necessary or if it was to stay in that area.
Sure.
But I'm just trying to determine if it's necessary or not.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Like, if there's, we don't, we understand like a small bush is not going to cover up a huge view shed, and that's something that we will have in more detailed designs as this project moves forward to have that landscaping plan to where we feel that we need to be able to have some more vegetation in. With Stromber?
Stumbow.
Stumbow, I'm sorry. That's something we'll definitely take into consideration for here as well. We want to make sure that we are building a good project for all stakeholders in the area. And the spring is going to come around, we're going to have more detailed designs. We could definitely furnish a landscaping plan at that time that is more indicative of what the facility we're trying to build. Because this is still a five percent right here. We still have to go do some more detailed analysis to make sure that we're firing on all cylinders. We have geotech. There's also times where we've removed some panels from an area and relocated somewhere else just to make sure that everyone feels good with this facility, not just we're here to put our foot down and this is what we're going to build.
That's all I have.
Okay. So, at this time, any member of the public, if you'll have three minutes to ask questions, you'll have to identify yourself and give your address, and I have my timer on my phone, so then you can ask questions. It has to be regarding the testimony here. It can't be your opinion, your statement. That comes at a later time in the hearing. So, does anyone here have any questions they would like to?
Hi.
Yes? Just stand up and give your name.
My name is Thomas Scunhorn. I live at one nine one oh four West Union Road. Been in McHenry County for fifty-two years. I've been in this location for twenty-five.
Can you show us where you live, sir?
This is my land right here.
Okay.
Okay. You don't see the rest of the picture, but this is where my neighbors all live, and there's approximately twelve to sixteen houses along here, and I wasn't thinking about these when I first read about this.
But you have questions now? It's got to be questions.
I do. I do. My biggest question is why this location? There's a million locations in the county, why this one?
That's the landowner, they want to work with us. I mean, we would love to put in facilities wherever that is closest to the substation. This is the landowner that they're like, hey, we don't want a farm anymore. What are our other options that came apart with us?
Okay. I think if you lived where I lived, you would have some concerns. I'm not against renewable energy.
That's a statement. We've got to be questions, just questions.
All right. Just back to my point, this land here, my yard and the yards across from me is what's called an, ours would refer to as an oak savanna. There's about sixty, hundred to three hundred and fifty year old oak trees.
Question.
I'm just telling you that because you guys talked about trees, I want to bring that to the forefront, okay?
Thank you.
So, there's, there's a lot going on back here.
Again, do you have a question? You can talk later about anything.
No, my question is why that location?
Okay.
And there's a thousand more. And why isn't the county board pushing for a location that impacts less people?
Okay. Anyone else with a question regarding the testimony here today? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Elizabeth Sanderson. I live at eighteen eight oh six West Union Road. You'll be pointed out here?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, this would be here on car. This is my, this is ours right here.
Okay.
So, we're close to it. You mentioned you reached out on one of your slides, you reached out to twenty-nine neighbors. I haven't talked to any of them that you reached out to. I wonder if you have a list of them?
Yeah, I do have a list that I can share, and I have it here. And see if, because I'm, it's.
That was it?
No. It's.
There you go.
And your last name, ma'am?
Sanderson. There it is.
James Sanders, your husband?
I didn't get anything.
I mean, that's what comes in the mail.
I didn't get anything either.
So, it was a mailing you sent out?
We sent out a mailing for August eleventh. We usually send a certified mail. This time, we actually didn't, and it just goes back to where we have to send out certified mail. Unfortunately, a lot of the mailers people think is just being sold, and they put it with the rest of the junk mail that you get usually and sends on off. This is not the only thing that we send out to residents at all. This is, you know, we're telling them multiple times of just where this project is heading, and if they have any questions, there's a lot of information that they can call directly or email for this. I know we have some concerned residents here, and they'll get my business card, and that's something that I can work with them moving forward with these projects. But these are the ones, these are the ones that we set in for the mailings, and I'm sorry that it didn't get to you, ma'am. It just happens sometimes.
Okay. You also pointed out this property here?
Yep.
Which is two people. You said they're stakeholders that you personally talked to?
I did not say that.
Or connected? Well, you pointed out those two. I just wondered why only those two?
Oh, no, like, for anything that is on that list, that is our attempt to let them know that this project is moving into this area. And just looking right now, we could have incomplete data, and, you know, this is still moving through zoning board appeals to conditional use permit. We all like to engage as best as we can, anyone that is close to this project.
How much fill?
What's that?
How much fill?
Oh, no fill.
None?
No.
You're putting road, and you're not putting in any fill?
Minus gravel for what we have.
That's cool.
But we're just doing geotech. Geotech is where we actually put in bearings, machinery to find out the toughness of the soil. This facility, like, this area is pretty flat. Like, it's, if anything, fill for gravel will be moving around, maybe some topsoil. I'll know that more as the winter goes on, but from preliminary engineering schematics, like, there's really not going to be anything that we're putting on top of topsoil, and that's also not compliant with our agricultural impact mitigation agreement with the landowners as well.
But you're putting in road that's twenty to forty feet wide?
No, you're right, and thank you for bringing that on up. I don't know that linear feed for fill for that gravel road.
Okay. Does, does anyone else have questions?
Hello, my name is Michael Stumbow. As we pointed out earlier, my house is right here on Dunham Road. A lot of the questions have already been asked by the very competent board here who took my letter into consideration. I just kind of wanted to go through these for the record. Just to clarify, you will not be adding any battery storage in the future?
Correct.
No batteries. And there's no hazardous materials located on the properties such as heavy metals, lead, et cetera?
No.
And we went over this. Would the petitioner agree to additional evergreen screening on the east line of the property?
No.
Will there be any land grading or any land being changed in any way that will affect water shadow runoff from the property?
No, and as mentioned with the previous stakeholder, we're going to have more detailed designs. We're not looking to cover something up, add more fill than what we actually have to. If anything, it just needs to be created.
And finally, for questions, I know you mentioned earlier that you were in contact with the Army Corps of Engineers. Were they, so they were consulted regarding the section of wetlands on the property?
Yes.
And you were given any kind of recommendations or anything from them?
Since they're non-jurisdictional, that was kind of the end of consultation with them, but what we usually do is that we've put in like fifty-foot buffers around that type of identified or non-jurisdictional wetland from a construction and engineering sense, as well as just to not even deal with it. I know that this area is a wetland here. We're avoiding it with panels and fence, and then there's a small non-jurisdictional wetland here that we're not impacting and staying away from, even though it's non-jurisdictional.
One, one final question. I did look on the map, and I don't have it with me right now, and I'm sorry, but I did see the panel layout. It did look like some of the panels were on the wetland. Are you aware of that?
Not at the point, but like, that's something that we can take a look at it right now. It'd be kind of, be kind of interested, but like, usually when it goes through an engineering process right here, like, maybe two, oh, yeah, you know, a hundred percent, but like, for, for where that wetland is, actual wetland that is, that we're not impacting that, could be something from a historic floodplain, which we've also contacted FEMA about that historical floodplain. They say that we are good without any floodplain permits to deal with, you know, that infrastructure. But for as wetlands jurisdictional or not, we're doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Everyone has had their chance to take a question, so now we'll move on to a report from the staff.
So, the subject property is zoned A-one agricultural district and is surrounded as well by A-one agricultural zoning. The subject property is currently used for agriculture, and the surrounding uses are all agricultural or single family with open space along the railway to the north. The future land use map designation for this property is agricultural with a small bit of environmentally sensitive material on the north end of the property. I did go out to the site. As was mentioned, it was relatively flat. Didn't see much else other than snow while I was out there, but everything has met the state and, and county standards. I don't have any objections to the request.
Is there anyone on the board with a question or Ms. Sherrill?
No.
Okay, so I have a question. So, regarding the landscaping plan on the east side, do you have, would you be prepared to give us a condition that would show more specifically what we might want to require as landscaping on the east side? as landscaping on the east side?
Since it's not required landscaping, it is more than 500 feet from the adjacent neighbors there. It is additional. So are you looking for language specifically?
Yeah. If there was some question, if there's some condition that somebody wanted to add, I mean, what would we be looking at? Or should we leave it that they'd work with the landowner?
You could do that, that they work specifically with the landowner. I know there's multiple landowners there, so I don't know if you want to just specify the specific landowner that's requesting it. Otherwise, you could just put that additional, you know, vegetative screening along the east side as determined, as to be determined or something like that, so that we know that it's at least on the books.
Okay. I think that would be sufficient. That answers my question. Does anyone else have a question? Okay. Then now we'll move on to statements from the public. Again, you have three minutes. You can state your name and address, and then you can give us an opinion on anything you want regarding this project. Does anyone, would anyone like to make a statement?
Michael Stumbow, 6313 Dunham Road. I'm here representing many residents of Dunham and West Coral who cannot be here today. We're aware of the restrictions placed on the zoning board due to recent Illinois legislation. But we would still like to seize the following conditions implemented to kind of mitigate some of the impact from the solar farm, such as Section 4.4 of the proposal says that additional screening would be agreed to contingent upon the county. My concern is basically if it's not in writing and it's just an agreement, and we're gonna talk later after the fact with the developer, there's really nothing to hold them to, you know, to a standard. So I was hoping that we can get a condition, some sort of a condition added with that. That would be very helpful. We talked about this earlier, preserving the existing mature trees on the property. And another landowner has a lot of mature, a lot of mature trees on his land, possibly reducing the number of panels near the wetlands. We went over that. In conclusion, we're basically all moved here to be part of this rural community. We're all concerned about this solar farm, what it will do to that. We're also concerned about future property values. I know this topic is usually dismissed by developers and solar farm companies. But recent studies, including one that I sent to the ZBA recently from Virginia Tech, shows that this effect is real. And this is a study from 2005, or, sorry, 2025. If this solar farm is forced upon us from Illinois legislation, we ask that its impact be minimized by these conditions that we're asking for. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone else have a statement they'd like to make?
I just have a short one. Elizabeth Sander, 18806 West Union Road. This is a highly sensitive aquifer, and I'm concerned that it's going to be damaged by the construction and the fill for the road. Also wildlife disruption in this area. We pay taxes to the McHenry County Conservation District. Well, you know, should that be the only land that we're concerned about as far as wildlife? No, I don't think so. And I think there are many, many places, other places than this, that a solar farm could go that would make much more sense. I'm not against solar, but this is not a good place for it. Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Okay. Do you have a closing statement?
I really do appreciate everyone's input. But I want to reiterate the fact that, you know, we're here to work with you guys. We don't want to be a state for where you guys live. We want to make sure that what we put in is something that is well-received throughout the entire community. I know for you guys, I'll be giving you my part. I'll be reaching on out. Let's keep this conversation going. For the county board members, I do appreciate your time. You know, looking forward to building this facility, but once we have all buy-in from all stakeholders. So really do appreciate everyone's time today.
Okay. So at this time, we'll close the hearing portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to the voting portion of the meeting. Staff has some proposed conditions. They're all in, everyone has a copy in their packet. If there's no objection, I won't read through them, but then I will entertain if anyone wants to amend or add anything. But if there's no objections, we will just accept what's there.
I would like to amend number five.
Okay.
I haven't passed this through completely, so bear with me.
There's a need for a second for discussion. I want you to.
Okay. So it's been, well, I guess we better see how you want to amend it before you second it.
I would like to add some verbiage stating that the developer will work directly with contingent homeowners regarding screening along their property.
Mr. Cozen, do you want a second then?
I'll second it would have lead to amendment by my partner.
Yeah.
First, for purposes of vesting this geographically, can we reference the site plan as our point of reference? Because that was used during the presentation. In fact, I was the one who contributed to site plan in that. And that was the one that was created 10, 13, 2025 by the consultant. And specifically, if we can do a detailed landscape plan supplementing the site plan showing as illustrated on the site plan, which is already called a supplemental vegetation along the east property line of the subject property.
Are you amenable to that amendment?
I would like to keep it all contingent landowners, which would be all four sides, basically.
Are we still in discussion?
So, so we have this amendment proposed. Is there a second to the amendment? Okay, so we're back to the original motion. So Ms. Gardner, you want to speak to your motion then?
The original or the amendment to the amendment? I'm confused now.
Well, Mr. Cozen wanted to amend it to use the site plan on the east side. So we're back to your...
Lynnea, I'm sorry. I was confused on, I mean, we're going back on amendments to amendments to amendments.
We're back, the amendment.
Well, then you called a little too quick, because I would have seconded his amendment, which was a second to the amendment. So I got confused. And if I can't do that anymore, that's fine. I'll bring it up again.
You're saying you're in favor of only seeing landscaping on the east side of the property? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
I can, just briefly, I see no reason to add to the landscaping along the Union Pacific right-of-way along the north, nor on the open field to the west. And adding landscaping to an existing oak savanna bluntly is like bringing coals to Newcastle. And so the only thing that is left would be the east side. It is already, they are already recognizing that, they, meaning the applicant, because the only application of the supplemental vegetation symbol is on the north line of the lay-down area.
Okay. But there are residents to the south, am I right?
Right. But there is, none of the affected area or even the fence line comes within proximity unless you were talking about adding it to the fence line. I'm sorry, I was following the property line.
Okay. So we're going to vote on the amendment, which says only the east side. So if you feel that it should only be on the east side using the site plan, you're voting for. If you want it on other places as well, then you're voting against the amendment.
Okay. Point of information.
Yes, sir. Mr. Eldredge.
The east side is Bob's. But does this, will this eliminate on the eastern portion of the south fence line, they are already proposing additional? That is an area that I think we probably need some. And I'm not clear as to whether that's being eliminated by this.
So, Mr. Cozen, in your amendment, are you keeping the supplemental vegetation to be added just north of the lay-down area that's on the site plan?
No, I was not removing, I was adding, as the word supplemental, I was adding it, continuing it on a path north of the...
So that would remain and then the east side as well?
Yes. Well, it'd sweep around. I was not able to...
It's worded that, so it reflects that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because it didn't really.
Okay. So the amendment is to continue the vegetation up the east side and keep what is already on the site plan that is north of the lay-down area?
That's correct.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on that amendment to the original motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Eldredge?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Kurnick?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So this is the amendment to number five. The landscape plan will be that there is additional landscape screening on the east side to be worked out with the staff. Okay. Are there any other amendments to the conditions?
Madam Chairman, I move acceptance of the conditions as amended.
I'll second. Mary Donner.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Eldredge, seconded by Ms. Donner, to approve the conditions as amended. Okay, I'll take the vote. Mr. Eldredge?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Kurnick?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the conditions are approved. At this time, I would take a motion to approve this conditional use request.
Madam Chairman, I move acceptance of the conditional use subject to the conditions.
Donner seconds.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this conditional use request. Discussion, Mr. Eldredge?
Yes. This is a roughly 60-acre parcel contained within a 72-acre larger parcel for conditional use for community solar located on the north side of Union Road, running up to the Union Pacific right-of-way to the north. It is presently largely agricultural between the Village of Union and the city of Marengo. Public Law 102-1123 and 103-0580 requires that if state and McHenry County standards have been met, that we approve such a petition. And it is the finding of staff with which I agree that all standards have been met, and therefore, we are required to vote in favor of the petition. I do urge the petitioner to work closely and cooperate fully with adjacent landowners in their screening requirements. Having said that, I think that this is a reasonable location for such a facility. They are limited in selecting locations by the capacity of interconnection points with Commonwealth Edison. And that and willing landowners are what really determine where they can locate their So while I am required to vote in favor, because this is a fairly typical and pretty useful standard location for this kind of facility, I'm not uncomfortable in voting in favor of it either. So I shall be voting in support.
Ms. Gardner?
I agree with Mr. Eldredge. This actually does seem like a fairly suitable location for a solar farm with the proper screening. I urge you, as Mr. Eldredge did, to work closely with the surrounding homeowners and become friends.
Absolutely.
Yes. And as Mr. Eldredge stated, you know, it's not our choice where these go. It's not necessarily the, you know, the petitioner's choice where they go. It's where availability is. We often have that question when we have these solar farms. Why did you choose here? Please move it. We can't move it because we didn't put it there. We didn't choose that. The actual farmer who owns the land chooses that option. So all in all, I am in favor of this. I am particularly happy that this petitioner is an operator as well as a developer that always, in my mind, makes a better future for these places. So with that, I'll pass it on.
Mr. Cozen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll be in favor of this petition, one, because I believe the public record demonstrates the seriousness by which this board and its staff takes on the recommendations and the requirements and looks at every nuance. And so these are not rubber stamped throughout the county. The second one is the recognition that there are limitations, both in design and in code. And I am reminded of that, though not being a resident of McHenry County for nearly a half-century, each time I put up my Christmas tree, I wonder why the contractor had to put the outlet so far from where the tree really does belong. And so with that, I will be against approving this petition.
Mr. Schnabel?
I would carefully like to reiterate my comments of the first two colleagues of mine as far as Mr. Cozen's statement is concerned. I'm sure there's a lot of validity to that, but I will be voting in support of this petition.
Ms. Donner?
I'm reminded that this is, this hearing and this request is just the beginning. It's the number one part that says, is this where it can be? And as I believe you've heard and understood today, we take it very carefully. We are very serious about what's going on with these things, so that when we pass it on to the next people who have to look at it and approve it, have something to work with. It says, okay, so here's the start. You've got the, you know what the house is going to look like, but who's doing the electrical? Who's doing the heating? Who's doing this and who's doing that? And if you don't have it up and it's not up to code, it's not going to happen, whether or not we have approved it at this point. I'm in support of this request.
Mr. Kurnick?
The discretion which we would otherwise have in addressing conditional use permits in general has been substantially cabboned by state statute and limiting the discretion which we would otherwise have when it comes to solar farms. It's our obligation to follow the law when the facts support the request, even though we might otherwise disagree with the law. So as we sit in a quasi-judicial capacity, we have to apply the law to the facts. That said, I am comfortable with voting in favor of this, as I feel all of the conditions for the approval of a conditional use permit for solar farms has been established.
And I would agree that the standards, the state standards and the county standards have been met on this petition. I would like to point out that the only trees that would be removed is on a .06-acre parcel that is where a roadway would be going through from the South Union, or West Union Road. And it would be very minimal. There would be no oaks involved as well. The wetland delineation report prepared by Kimberly Horn showing three wetland areas, all of those are being avoided. The petitioner did really a great job in having buffers on all those wetlands. There's a floodway that goes through this property, a flood of record. And as well, there's just a few panels that are in that floodway. But according to the NRI, there hasn't been a flood on this property in 100 years, that there's no risk of any flooding. I'll read from there. Flooding occurs less than once in 500 years. of any flooding. I'll read from there. Flooding occurs less than once in five-hundred years, according to this. So there, you know, there is just a low area there, but the, really the petition, the project has been designed with minimal impact to natural resources. And so having that done and changes to the conditions to provide a little more screening to the neighbors to the east, and as, and as indicated to the southeast on the site plan, I feel like any impacts to the neighbors are mitigated, so I'm in favor of the request. So I'll call for the vote. Mr. Eldredge?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kosen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Kurnick?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So this will go to the county board with a seven-to-zero vote approving the request. At this time, the hearing is closed. Thank you, everyone. And next Thursday is our party. You'll never forget.